This is the Milford Planning Board in session. Today is September sixteenth and we are on TV. Let's go. What's the pleasure of the company, of the meeting?
I'll make a motion for the meeting minutes.
Minutes of the meeting.
With the amendment.
The amendment was the date.
Unanimous of five. The date.
The date, right. Unanimous of four.
I think John did.
John said. Okay, we don't have any eighty-one Ps. Endorse the written extension agreement, page three, Trail Eastern Partners. Is that you, Joe?
Well, I have part of it. I have the act signed by the bank. I have it for you to sign and then I'll get Mr. Puffin's signature tomorrow. It's coming along.
Okay.
But it will be here. So there's the signature page for it. You can see that the bank has signed it. They signed it yesterday.
Yeah, okay.
And this morning. I have their lottery page here, which is separate.
I'll say it up here, right?
They should be almost done. Hey, I think we've got a lot more pages.
How many signatures are required on that?
I was gonna say.
Just the chair?
Just the majority, I believe.
I think you need two more, correct?
Do you know, Joe, I mean, excuse me, Larry?
Pardon?
Is it just the chair that needs to sign or?
No, three.
We need two more.
At least three. You can all four sign it if you want. See, fine.
You all signed freely voluntarily?
Yes.
You're all known to be, you're all from Milford, correct?
Karen, you should take it for us, but yes.
Mine even is on it.
Yeah, he's, he's.
Did you see Patrick's signature?
He's ours. He's in the front of it.
Can you verify?
It's actually recorded.
I'll say it's really.
It is. We have to record it every year.
You scribbled on it?
Yeah, legit.
Unbelievable.
Y'all said, Joe?
I believe so.
Okay. So I'm gonna go on to number four, site plan review, one ninety-five West Street, A Step in Time.
Are we getting in, Larry?
No, you weren't supposed to be on this quick. Just put it on top of the.
Put it on top of it.
Just take. Do you want me to read the report while he's putting it up? Site plan review, one ninety-five West Street, A Step in Time daycare. The applicant requests site plan approval to establish a daycare center on the subject property. The existing commercial building and parking lot will remain substantially unchanged. The proposed site plan is a result is a result of numerous meetings with the applicant and their engineers. The existing westerly driveway located within the asylum West Street intersection is to be closed to avoid traffic and user conflicts as its current configuration is hazardous. The driveway closure will consist of curbing on both the street side and the parking lot side with a raised landscape island approximately ten foot wide between the new curb lines. All access to the site will be from the existing easterly two-way driveway located on West Street. The existing parking lot will be restriped as shown on the plan in substantially the same configuration as currently exists. The primary entrance to the facility will be at the northwest corner of the building near the parking area. The building will be handicap accessible via use of both a ramp to the primary entrance as well as a serpentine walkway to the upper floor rear door at the northwest corner of the building. A fenced-in play area is also proposed in the rear. I reviewed the site plan and find it, and find it all applicable zoning requirements appear to be met, therefore recommend approval, subject to all relevant comments. And you've got the initial comments from the town engineer and responses from, from Bob to those and they've been addressed on the plan. You've got a favorable report from the fire department, a favorable report from the building official, and from the Milford Water Company. Those were the only responses we received.
I see that Vani has a number of engineering issues here.
I'll be addressing.
Are you gonna be addressing?
I'll address.
They all have.
I'll address all of them directly and definitely not.
Okay, thanks.
This is from Gary that's addressing.
Yeah.
She has one, oh, I'll.
Okay.
All right, so, so this is the old Wall computer building. And the applicant is proposing to open a daycare, A Step in Time. They currently operate A Step in Time daycare in the plaza across the street on the lower level.
I know what you're talking about.
So they've now purchased this property, purchased this building, so they want to, rather than be a tenant, they are now gonna be owner occupied. So the current building is, is a one-story, this section is a one-story building. This section is a two-story house. The two-story house is gonna be remained and used for infants and toddlers. So that, you know, it's not really, because of, you know, because of the second floor moving issue. There's a, there's a door that needs in here for access. There's an existing opening here to a ramp that goes along the building this way, however, does not meet the handicap, so it's really.
Why don't you stand on this side of it so you don't bother watching the camera?
Okay.
And the mic's going, sir.
And, um, so the, the applicant applying to the state or for this particular serpentine walkway, they've done a waiver from the state, so they wouldn't be required to put an elevator in the building.
That's the second floor.
So this is, this is the four point eight percent ramp that goes through and will get through the second floor access to this building, which will, which will allow them to not have to put an elevator. There's an existing garage here that used to store that remained. We also have an existing entryway here. It's about four stairs up. That's gonna be eliminated. There's gonna be a ramp with a platform constructed for handicap accessibility that will come down into the parking lot and be leveled. The parking lot is existing. It's in somewhat, it's got some cracks with some grass stuff growing up through it. That's all gonna be cleaned up. The cracks are gonna be filled. It's gonna be sealed and then restripped, the handicap spaces here. Also, there was an existing entrance right in this location here, which kind of led to the throat of Silo Street. That is being proposed to be closed off with berm on both sides that will then be landscaped. There's an existing sign that's gonna be remained to be used, the existing sign on the site. The only other issue that, that the town engineer had was the original location for the dumpster was right, was right in here. And we're proposing to keep that same location just because logistically, there's no place else on the site that a truck could actually come in and service the dumpster. She was concerned that it was close to the wetlands and thought it should be at least fifty feet away from the wetlands, but this is, this is.
It's gonna be fenced in, Bob?
This particular dumpster, it never was fenced in. It was never, I think it's not, there's no pad for it. It's just basically just off the edge of the pavement on, on a grassed area, similar to what we have at our office and a lot of places in town.
Can we just put a fence around it then? I, I understand the logistics of not having a pad specifically close to the wetlands, but.
Go ahead, sorry.
What's the harm in putting a, a small fence just so it, there is no debris that's gonna fly out of it?
As far as litter just flying out?
Yeah, I mean.
And if she's gonna have babies, there's gonna be diapers in there and stuff like that.
Sure, we can put a fence.
I just, I, I think just putting up some sort of screen. You know, one of those fences that has either the slot, I'm, I'm not telling you to have to put a vinyl fence on it.
Yeah, no, 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 we understand.
Just something that, 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 I guess blocks, blocks it from, from, from traffic to understand what it is. I mean, I, you know.
All right.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, it's, even though it's a, it's a somewhat of a commercial type establishment, it's more of, the waste that they're gonna generate is more like household waste. It's just a lot of it, that's all, you know. It's not like it's gonna be a lot of hazards. Yeah, we can put a fence.
Well, the other thing around with putting a fence, Bob, then, then we know it's designated. That's where the dumpster pad goes. That's where it is. It doesn't get moved over or.
Over to different places.
Yeah, it's there. It's permanently there and it's.
And I, and I understand the, you know, part of debris blowing out of it.
Sure.
So we can do that. The, the site is already serviced by Guinness Water and Sewer. There is no, there's no current drainage within the property at all and everything sort of sheet flows in this direction. We're not proposing to change that. We've got, we're showing some erosion control from the pre-pairs that are gonna be making the parking lot and the, how we're gonna be digging for the, um, footings for the walkway, the swimming walkway. Other than that, we've got a handicap sign we're proposing moving on now.
What's the proposed play area for the kids, Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry. This, this area, as you see in here, is a fenced-in area, the proposed fence. The play area is within the fenced area. And these, this walkway is gonna be built at grade so that it's gonna be flushed. So they're gonna, they're actually used after the kids have, you know, ride their bikes on, little bicycles and stuff like that. So it's actually part of the play area.
Okay. That's good.
Joe?
Do you have an easement for the sign?
The sign's existing. I don't, I mean, I don't know. It's, it's there. It's always been there.
It's state property. Unless I see an easement, I can't approve the plan. It shouldn't be there. Probably has to get moved. It was probably put there illegally to begin with. I, I guess I'd need, looking at Vani's letter and then the comments back, I, I'd be significantly concerned about the condition of the pavement and whether she feels comfortable that cleaning out the cracks and filling it is, is an acceptable process. I, I haven't been through the site in a while, but I know the pavement was in, was in pretty bad condition, so I'm not sure that that, to me, would be an acceptable method, but I would leave that up to her. But I would like to hear a comment as opposed to a comment from her and then, and then a statement that says they're gonna do that and that, that's okay. So I, I, I don't know that that would necessarily be okay. And I, you know, I don't agree that, that she also expressed an interest in putting a separation at the front. And considering the amount of work that's being done, I don't know that a statement that says this is, we're trying to use this as an existing condition, considering the amount of work that's going on in the back is, is entirely true. So I see no reason why that, that entrance separation couldn't be done, although I am worried to a certain extent that that, this is a state highway and they may actually require more significant work done to that entrance way.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, I mean.
Have you, have you, have you gone to the state yet?
We're not proposing any new curcuts.
You're closing one. I would think they'd wanna know that, too.
No, we haven't gone to the state.
Those are my comments anyways.
The state has to approve of the, this walkway for her.
It's already approved.
It's already approved.
Yes, she already has a letter from the state.
She already has that letter.
It's already been approved, yes. Building Department, if you read the building inspector's letter, he references that that is already been approved.
Yes, yeah. John?
No. I agree with Joseph. You should contact the state on the sign and the closing of the, of realigning it.
Well, I would think that, that listening to Joe, that that would be a requirement as Vani has here also. And you haven't, have you spoken with her about, has she spoken with her about the closing there?
I have a, no. She did not, she did not specifically respond to my response. My response led her to her for the, um, from the planning board, however. She did, um, she sent a letter to. We're going before Concom on Thursday with a determination of capability. And she sent a letter to the chairman. She said, "In August, I made comments to the planning board after my review of the initial plans. In the middle, most of my comments were addressed. See attached documents. I'm still concerned about the dumpster being located three blocks from the wetland." That's all she stated. She literally said she had a remaining concern. In this particular letter, she did not really respond back to the planning board document, but that's what she said to the conservation commissioner.
Pat, do you have any comments?
My only comment relative to, and I'm not positive that they have to go to the state for closing, but I, I don't know one way or the other, but I'm happy to see that they actually did close. And I appreciate that. As far as the pavement. I'm assuming if you fill it, and again, I mean, filling it and then, and then.
Sealing it.
Sealing it, I, I think should.
It should work.
Should hold the integrity. I mean, obviously, we're not looking for just to, you know, throw some paint down and call it a day. I mean.
Correct, correct.
You know, and I, I also recognize that if, if the applicant has gone through the painstaking order of purchasing this, that, that I'm assuming that she'd wanna protect her own property as well.
No, and, and if, and if in the future they decide that they need to redo, well, obviously, we would, we'd have to, well, we'd have to go back to Conservation Commission at least because it would require a significant amount of work in the buffer, so. But at this time, there's no proposal to rip up the parking and, and do any kind of repaving, just to try to keep it repaired as much as possible to get the, the business going.
Well, she's done a lot of work of purchasing the place and doing all the things she could possibly do. So I'll, I'll look for a motion from anyone?
Well, you're gonna have to get clarity from Joe, because again, other than, certainly I wouldn't wanna see a fence around that.
I, I, like I said, I, I can't, I couldn't sign it today. Well, I can't vote in favor of it tonight for those reasons. I'm asking for Vani to take a look at it to make sure. I, my recollection was that, that sealing it, that it was more than just cracks and that sealing it was not going to be adequate. That's my recollection, but I'm more than willing to say I could be wrong. It's been a long time. But I, I would like to get a, a letter from the, the town engineer that she feels comfortable with that, because we've had various issues with parking lots in the town before. And, and I remember one at the Dunkin' Donuts on South Main Street that we signed. And if I had to do it over again with the parking lot that's down there, I would've never done it again, because that one needed to be done as part of the thing. We promised it and it never happened. And as far as I'm concerned, that's a public safety issue that we need to, we need to make sure we're comfortable with, especially when it's gonna be a daycare center with young children around. So to me, I, I, I think the, the board deserves to have that letter from, from the town engineer that says, yes, that's a, that's a reasonable repair method that makes the, the area safe. Sign, I'm, I'm almost positive there is no easement. Said that out jokingly, so I know the state wouldn't grant it. The sign has to be moved and you have to show a new sign. We can't put a sign there that's not within their property.
Well, to me, that, I, I think we need to move this to the next meeting.
Yeah, I have no problem continuing it. I, and again.
Have to continue it.
I think that's reasonable then.
Yeah. So do I have a motion on continuous? Oh, sorry.
So it's my property.
Oh, okay. Give me your name.
Amy Pinto. So do I have to take out the island that's there then? Because there's an island where the sign is in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so does that need to be removed or?
The sign just needs to be removed.
Just a sign.
Just a sign.
We, we can't, can't approve a plan that, that effectively is going to be a new sign in someone else's property. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what's being shown.
I'm just asking.
The, the, whatever is there now, I mean, that, that's part of whatever the grading is between the state and whatever. There's no, there's nothing that needs to be taken out there, but part of, you know, our requirement is, is where signs go and what they are. And we, we would need to have that shown on, on your property.
Okay. We can put a sign at the top where the.
Yeah, and I, I have, I have time to actually communicate with people at the Mass Highway to determine whether or not that's an issue for them, if they're concerned with it or not.
Let's continue to the next meeting then.
Okay. Okay, so this will be continued to the next meeting, which is October?
Seven.
Seven. So we'll see you back then with a letter from our engineer, Vani, making sure that she, she approved that curb kite.
No, no, no.
And the state.
It's for the paving.
Paving, sorry. Paving and the sign is what we're interested in.
Well, I think to me that the sign, that the sign's gonna be relocated.
Did you make that move?
Yeah, sign anywhere in their property. I don't think we have an issue with it.
And then obviously, if that be the case, you should probably show the fence to that.
Yeah.
All right. Didn't expect to be here at that one. All right, we have public hearings open. It's a little after seven oh five. Karen? On Tuesday, September sixteen, two thousand fourteen, in room three of Milford Town Hall, fifty-two Main Street, the Milford Planning Board will, at the time designated, conduct public hearings regarding the following. The full application and/or maps of the above items are available for public inspection Monday through Friday from eight to four P.M. at the Office of Planning and Engineering at the Town Hall, fifty-two Main Street, Milford, Mass. Interested parties may express their views at the above scheduled hearings.
The, uh, the hearing scheduled to start at seven oh five was an application of the Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning thirty-one parcels located along and in the vicinity of Main Street between Water Street and Orange Street. The seven-ten P.M. public hearing was another application by the Planning Board to amend section three point four parking requirements of the zoning bylaw to provide new provisions for shared parking. The seven-fifteen public hearing is, again, an application of the Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw by adding in section two point three use regulation schedule references to hospitals, secondary food service, heli-stop, and solar energy uses in the O.R. Office Residential District, and by adding to the height requirements, a new footnote J relating to height requirements in the O.R. District. And the seven-twenty public hearing is an application by the Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone some seventy-five parcels, including the Milford Regional Medical Center in that neighborhood, in the vicinity of Main Street, Nelson Heights, and the intersection of Route sixteen and one oh four, and one forty, rezone from R.A. General Residential and/or C.B. Neighborhood Commercial to O.R. Office Residential District. So we'll go back to the first public hearing.
Okay, so.
The.
Is there anyone here?
Well, do you want me to go through and.
Oh, okay.
Explain exactly what it is?
Right, the articles, yes.
Yes, specifically, the, the first public hearing was to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning parcels along Main Street. There are a number of parcels, thirty-one altogether.
Excuse me, Larry, just for point of reference, is that map one?
Pardon?
Is that map one?
Yes, that's where I was going.
Just point of reference for those who are watching. I, I just, okay. Didn't know you were getting up. Didn't know you were getting up. I just thought I'd help.
You know, in my age.
I just thought I, I tried to be helpful, sorry.
So the public hearing number one again is to rezon certain parcels along Main Street between Water Street and Orange Street. The little ears that you see outlined in the dark line would be where the zoning boundary would be if this rezoning would be approved. The intention is to adjust the zoning line, which had previously cut all of these properties kind of indiscriminately based on a strip or a ribbon of zoning being applied along Main Street. This would adjust it so that the parcels are entirely within the C.B. Commercial Zoning District. There are only a couple of exceptions to that. There's a parcel that goes with the auto repair facility, or I'm sorry, the auto parts facility at the corner of Green and Main. There's a parcel on, actually, there are two small parcels on Taylor Street that, just because of the configuration of the other parcels in the entire area, seemed to make sense to include those. And there was one parcel at the corner of Mayhew Slip and Water Street that would have otherwise been totally surrounded by the C.B. Zone had it not been included. So those are the only exceptions of parcels that weren't already mostly in the C.B. Zone.
Thank you, Larry. Is there anyone here to wanna speak on this, this particular application? Hearing none?
No. On this one, Madam Chairman, to Larry's point, it makes perfect sense to finally adjust the zone to mirror what the lot lines are, because clearly, when it was changed, no one took into consideration that it should've been following to the exact specifications of the lot line. So with that said, I, I would certainly make a motion in favor for, for this one.
They need to close the public hearing and then make the decision.
Well, the way you did it with all four, I, I didn't know.
I thought we were gonna handle all of one big one.
I thought we were, too, yeah.
I didn't know you could actually, I'll close the public hearing on the seven oh five.
Okay. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed on the seven oh five?
And I'll make a favorable.
In the vote?
You have to vote on closing the public hearing.
Yes.
Make a motion?
Motion and seconded, now you have to, all in favor of closing it.
Okay, the motion was made by Pat, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous of four.
And I'll make a, yeah.
Okay.
Favorable to be.
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
A favorable motion to the town, bring it to the town meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous of four. Okay, the seven-ten?
It's definitely seven-ten. The, the second public hearing is, is a text amendment, as I mentioned earlier briefly. The, it's an application of the Planning Board to amend section three point four parking requirements of the zoning bylaw by replacing the existing provisions of section three point four point one, sub B, sub three, entitled Shared Parking, with a new reduced parking ratios for certain multiple-use developments. Currently, there is a somewhat convoluted parking credit schedule that can be utilized in certain instances where you have multiple uses in the same plaza. It relies on the hours of operation of the various businesses. And if, if the cards fall correctly, they could potentially get up to a twenty percent reduction in the overall off-street parking requirements. The problem with that is that the uses change sometimes quite rapidly, not even over a period of years, sometimes it's just within months. So my thought was, and what we've talked about now for the last several months, would be to just make a determination that if there are multiple buildings in a plaza, by virtue of that very development style, the number of trips to the plaza in, in terms of shopping at each individual store would automatically be reduced in some degree and have shared parking, because you've had shared trips. So the proposal would be to replace that, that chart in subsection three, four, one, B, three with a section that reads, as you have in your packet, I'll read it for anybody that's interested. It would now say Shared Parking, notwithstanding any other parking requirements set forth in this article. For individual land uses, when any land or building is used for three or more distinguishable purposes, the minimum total number of onsite off-street parking spaces required to serve the combination of all uses may be reduced as follows, provided that the Planning Board first issues a special permit for such reduction. Three through five separate uses would be ten percent reduction, and six plus separate uses would be a twenty percent reduction.
Okay, that sounds, so.
Larry, just within that, I'm, this seems reasonable for a new build, but my only quick question is, is as the, there's a change of use within the building, how are we to know if calculations are correct unless you come back for a waiver of site plan?
Well, this doesn't affect that. Change of use, if it's triggered, if, if site plan waiver is still triggered, they would be coming back for a review. This is just in terms of how you would do the overall calculation in the first place. So if you have an existing plaza and there are changes of use, if they have six or seven separate uses there already, you know that the overall calculation can be reduced by twenty percent, but you would have to go back and confirm, the same way we do now, that the new use is, is still going to be covered with the parking available on the site.
I think what Pat's, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what Pat's saying is, let's say we have a use that gets approved, or it's existing with three units, which would have twenty percent reduction. Someone goes in and goes to.
Ten, ten percent.
Goes to the building department and says, "I wanna take down a wall. I wanna only have two uses." Based on our parking, they would then lose the reduction to that, but how would we ever know that to check to make sure that he would be okay? That's.
Well, through the, through the change of use, if, if they're doing that and expanding a use, that would still be at least a site plan waiver to confirm that the off-street parking is gonna be complied with, because the, the expansion of, of that one existing use into the adjoining space.
I don't, I don't think the building department would think it that way. If it's too, if it's too, you think so? Too, too existing. Two existing commercial usages?
Right.
They're taking down a wall, he would make them come back to us?
If it's, if it's a change of use, that's what.
But I'm saying, it would be a change of use, two commercial usage.
Because if you, if you had a bookstore in a restaurant.
No, 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 if I had a bookstore in a bookstore.
Then what difference does it make?
Bookstore, because, based on this, bookstore buys out the other bookstore, there's now only two uses in that property.
Well, that's, I thought you were speaking in terms of existing.
You lose the ten percent reduction.
I thought you were speaking in terms of existing development. If you had a new development, they would, they would only benefit from this by special permit.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm just saying, anybody could come back at any point in time, existing or whatever, let's say they go through waiver of site plan or whatever, it comes through at one point in time, then it changes again. All I'm saying is, I think we need to make sure that the building department is aware of this and we need to make sure that, that any type of thing like this, although I would think he would, any, any, any change of, of, any change of internal sizing even could have an effect and the building department needs to be aware of that and come back to us.
It's still a special permit, so I'm just looking for a.
Yeah.
Well, the only, the only difference, if this were passed the way it is and what's happening now, is that if it were in an existing plaza, they don't benefit from this unless they've come through to get, to get a special permit. If it's a new plaza and they wanted to do this, they would have the special permit in hand.
The first time, the first time.
And that would, and that would trigger.
It's not the first time that concerns me.
Yeah, it's the next time through after we worry about it.
Those changes, yeah, those changes could trigger coming back and getting the special permit amended.
Yeah, and I think those, those changes, based on my understanding of the building department, in some cases, wouldn't come back to us, but they now need to, is what I'm, is all I'm saying, is that the same, the exact same use, however, if it takes up to what was considered two units before, would need to now come back to us, even if it was the same, same type of use, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
As long as the building department, as long as we make the building department aware of that, I think this is a better idea than the chart, I don't, I don't have a problem with this.
No, I don't, I don't think John will have a problem at all with it.
That's, essentially, that's what I'm, but I'm more concerned about taking, instead of consolidating and making two into one, I'm more concerned about taking one, converting it into two, and then having uses change and so on and so forth, that, that may then make the parking chart.
Yeah.
Unrealistic, that's all. But if you're telling me.
Well, they, if that's the case and they're adding a bunch of uses and it would change the calculation, they're going to be coming back to amend the special permit.
All right. Just making sure that there was.
Okay, thanks, Pat.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to make a comment? No, Joe?
Motion to close the public hearing and send a favorable recommendation to town meeting.
Motion made by Joe to close the public hearing and send a favorable to town meeting, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous of four, thanks, John. All right, what's, where are next? The five, five, five fifteen public hearing?
Yeah, seven fifteen, we're definitely past that. Again, this was another application from the Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw by adding in the Use Regulation Schedule, Section two point three, references to hospitals, secondary food service, heli-stop and solar energy system uses in the current office residential zoning district and by adding to the height requirements of Section two point five, intensity of use schedule, a new footnote J relating to the height requirements within the O.R. office residential district. So specifically, the, as you have in your packet, you can see that the use chart already obviously has an office residential district column. What, what the proposal is, would, would change the letter to a P for permitted across from the hospital use under the O.R. column for office residential zoning. They would put an S for special permit from the Planning Board in the column adjacent to the food service as a secondary use. It would put a footnote twenty-four under the O.R. column for heli-stops as other principal uses. And the footnote twenty-four says heli-stop permitted as accessory to hospital use only. And the last change in the O.R. column would be to put an S in, in the column across from accessory uses, large-scale solar energy systems, which would mean they would have to be a special permit from, from this board as well. The other thing that it.
Similar to what it is already, it's.
Yeah, it's the same.
Well, right now, the office residential zone doesn't permit those things.
I see.
Yeah, it's not in. Larry, just a point of, is it possible that we could actually take the next one before this one? And the reason why I'm asking is considering that the next one would rezone that area to O.R., if, if that were unfavorable, then I wouldn't, wouldn't want to vote on sending a favorable recommendation, not that I think it's going to happen, but in, in terms of process, I wouldn't want to send a favorable recommendation to town meeting on something that would get changed based on the, on the next public hearing.
Yeah, well, or we could finish discussing this and go right to the other before you vote. Vote on, vote on them in, in reverse order.
I'll leave that up to the chairs, how she wants to handle it.
All right, why don't we just continue with, with, finish off on, on the seven-fifteen one and then hop right into the, the seven-twenty application? I understand what Joe was saying, so let's just, let's just get that one done.
The, the second half of the amendment deals with the intensity of use schedule. Specifically, it would add a footnote for height requirements in, in the O.R. office residential zone. Currently, the office residential zone has the same requirements as the R.A. zoning district, which is a thirty-five-foot height, or two stories, whichever is less. The footnote J in the office residential column says maximum non-residential building height to be determined by the Planning Board upon the issuance of a special permit, but in no case shall the height exceed four stories or fifty feet, whichever is less.
So we'll hold off on, on the voting on that one and then go right down to nine, the seven-twenty application.
Is there any discussion that we want to have on, on three before we go to four?
Okay. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
I'd like to ask a question if I may. If.
Could you give us your name and your address?
My name is Harry Weber, I live in nine Nelson Heights. If the seven-twenty application passes, the height requirement go along with that? In other words, are you saying that the building, if one were to be built in vacant land on that area, could be no more than four stories or fifty feet? Is that correct?
In any, in any office residential zone, yeah.
We had an incident, I was telling Mr. Duncan, a number of years ago, where the temple property, which runs across the street from Nelson Heights, they wanted to put an office in there. Well, the office that they wanted to put in was astronomically high and we, we ended up going to a hearing, I don't even know what board it was, but we had paintings done of what a building would look on the lot and, and on the street, how it affected the neighborhood. And it just dwarfed that neighborhood because the land comes down this way and so forth. So that personally, I think that the height requirement is too high for an, for a building that might go in a situation like that. Nelson Heights is eighteen, nineteen, twenty feet wide, that's all. And you put a, you put a building aside of it, if one goes there, or allowed to go there, that's an awful, that's an awful height, awful big height.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this application? If not, it's a pleasure of the board.
Well, we do.
Oh, skip to the, skip to the seven-twenty.
Yeah, keep this one open and the seven-twenty.
Keep this one open, okay.
Seven-twenty public hearing was another application by the Planning Board to amend the zoning bylaw by rezoning some seventy-five parcels located along and in the vicinity of Main Street, Nelson Heights and the intersection of Route sixteen and one forty. Those parcels are represented on the other three maps here that we have up. Here's Route sixteen, here's Route one forty. The hospital campus is here, the cancer center is on the west side of one forty and the perimeter includes Nelson Heights, the properties that front on Route sixteen and the properties that front on Route one forty, up to and including the state pool and the residential lots on the west side directly across from the state pool. The rest of these properties are part of the hospital campus. The, the office planning and engineering over the last several years has actually had several different inquiries about having office or other hospital-related development in the neighborhood, but were obviously always turned away because it's in a residential zone. But in different instances, the first question was, well, we could always request rezoning to commercial. Well, my fear is that at least the town get ahead of this, the next requests coming in are going to be for zone changes to commercial, which I think would, would be going in the direction, because the commercial zones allow for many more uses than just offices or offices that are related to the medical facilities that are already there. So, over the last almost a year, the Industrial Development Commission and I had kicked around the idea of having an office residential zone, we proposed that to the board. Over the last several months, we've all talked about that. And this was the final configuration that seemed to make sense to rezone the area that's predominantly R.A. with a few exceptions of parcels up here on sixteen, that would logically create a new office residential zoning district, it's a contiguous zone, and while the majority of it is actually a medical center property, hence some of the amendments in the, in the text change that we just talked about, it does seem to create a logical zoning district if changes of use would occur. As the board will recall, when we first created the office residential zone, and it's applied, actually, part of it shows up here, it's applied downtown between Water Street and West Street, along the west side of Congress. It's, it's applied in areas that are characterized, at least in part, by some large older homes that have already been converted to multifamily. And the thought was, at least in part, that having the potential for an office use would be an adaptive reuse in a large older home and potentially help a homeowner or at least a building owner maintain the property by getting better rents for the office uses on the first floor, most likely, than it would have been to stay residential. That same philosophy could be applied in this area because it is a, an area that's somewhat transitional. Both the neighborhood up one forty and the Nelson Heights and the area around the intersection of one forty and Route sixteen are somewhat in transition in terms of the age of the homes, the condition, and these other, what I see as development pressures coming from the development community now, that the hospital has expanded a couple of times, the cancer center's there, and you've recently approved the latest expansion of the hospital. So there's more and more interest in the area, this would be a way to, to my mind, protect, protect the neighborhood. Obviously, even with the existing office zone that's in place, nothing prevents someone from assembling multiple properties and raising the, the older houses and building new offices. But in this case, there has been some interest in the area for the last several years, and this seemed to me to be a way, and, and the Industrial Development Commission to be a way to, to make sure that the town's in control of what happens there instead of the other way around.
Thank you, Larry. Is there anyone, just the public hearing, is there anyone would like to speak? Yes? Want to give your name and address?
My name is Brad Ackland, I'm in two Nelson Heights. I'm concerned about Nelson Heights area being of interest in terms of office space development. It's a dead-end street, I'm sure you're probably all aware. Cheers. It's, it's a dead-end street. My wife and I, we're homeowners, we have a family of small children, four little kids, and it's nice and private. To echo Harry's comment earlier, by changing this to office residential, you're opening yourself up to drastically changing the neighborhood as it presently is, which is not what we want to see at all. I know that there's other people in the neighborhood who feel, who aren't here tonight, who feel the same way. So I'm, I'm representing them insofar as that. But looking at the southern side of Main Street, I, I'm sort of curious as to where the rationale comes from, as to why that area being sort of ideal for the light commercial office space, because presently, it's pretty much all residential. And I know, I mean, from where we sit on Nelson Heights, that place on the corner of one forty and sixteen, I mean, I'm not stupid, that's, I know that there's a great deal of interest in that property and, and developing that property. And if it were to be developed, or at least the capacity for it to be developed in such a way, you know, consistent with that zoning bylaw, the seven-fifteen, you know, that's, we are not interested in that at all, at all, strongly opposed to that. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Harry, to that?
Harry Weber again. Do we have a vehicle, either our board or a zoning board of appeals, whether if somebody wanted to come in and do something in various areas that they could file for this, could it be done? In other words, if it stayed residential, as it's been since day one, and somebody wants to come in and make their home an office or take vacant land, which now would be automatically approved for office, can they apply and make an application for going into that area?
Under present zoning, you mean, Harry?
No.
Under present zoning, no.
Not, not under the.
So in other words, if I wanted to put a business in?
Today?
Couldn't do it.
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
I still would like, respectfully, like to make a motion to have you change all the south from the Hope Dale Line to Green Street and to leave it residential, and we'll see what comes up in the future.
Well, yeah, going back to that, I mean, we're talking about, we talked about Vava's property, which was commercial. I mean, if we all go back to that, that, that was temporary flowers for the longest time. I mean, that actually was commercial. I mean, I think right along Main Street, there may be residences there, but it really beckons to commercial. Now, the height thing, I, I can understand, but if you read what was put in, the height restriction is, that's a maximum, and I, and I believe that number is, is certainly a legitimate number along the other side of, of Main Street. I don't believe it would be a legit, legitimate number on, on your side of Main Street. I, I don't think that, you know, putting a four-story building on, on that side is, would, would fit in and would be, and that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish by doing this because we believe that one of the other things that could happen in terms of speaking, you know, what could possibly happen, if someone wanted to do this and, and went through and, and tried to get parcels, you can see that the C.B. district, what they would end up doing is they would try to extend the C.B. district, which would allow them, if that passed town meeting, and I'm not going to say it would or wouldn't, I have no idea, but that would be the logical thing to extend. In that case, the, the control that we would have is significantly less than what it would be if it was changed to the O.R. district, because the density and the usages are much more controlled in the O.R. So what we're saying is that we're, we're significantly concerned that somebody may come and, and, and change that C.B. district up further on, on Main Street. usage that we would, we would have no say in, per se. You know, office, an office building, we think that we could control the size of and the amount of open space that would be required is a lot less than what would be allowed in that CB zone. So that's what we're looking at in terms of what we're trying to do.
But doesn't that open the door, once you, if those last two were passed, doesn't that open the door that that property on the corner there could conceivably have a three or four-story building on there?
It could conceivably. What I'm telling you is, is what it says is, the height is governed by the planning board, and I can't guarantee you what any planning board in the future is going to say when that comes to them, but I think that, just as you had that discussion before with the building, I would hope that whatever board is sitting here, whatever members were here, would take that into account, that that side, as it sits right now today, twenty years from now could be totally different, but as it sits here today, wouldn't be in favor of putting a four-story building on that side of the street. However, if someone came to me on the other side of the street near Huntown Slip, I think a four-story building would fit rather well in there. And to try to limit this, to say one way or another, I think would bind us, whereas saying it's up to, but it's at the discretion of the planning board as to what the height is that they would allow, is a more appropriate way of doing it. And I think that's what we were trying to accomplish.
I think the other thing to make this, and again, you can't just do one side of the street and ignore the other side of the street. So what we're doing, or what we've done, is we've taken an approach of what the hospital's needs are, what the hospital's expansions have been, and as of late, most of the property in and around the hospital, they've been acquiring. Inevitably, and again, we have to predict the future, that maybe twenty years from now, they're going to want to put on another addition. So what we're trying to do is make it so that, for the needs of the hospital, we're addressing them. That's what we're doing. Now, fortunately, to your point, it's your neighborhood, and we get that too, and I think that's what Joe was just saying, this is via special permit. Obviously, we can't tell you who's going to be here twenty years from now. I will tell you, I will not, okay? No, God, no. I will not. But nonetheless, we're putting in the vehicle special permit, and Joe's correct. If on the hospital's side, they wanted to put on an addition that was going to be three and a half, four stories, it would be sensible. On your side, probably not, but I don't also see that the hospital's going to build the bridge across the street, because we're not in Boston. We're not going to start conjoining hospitals, because we only have one.
I mean, I understand that.
So we're looking at this as a long-term, and I understand, but obviously, you live there. We're not looking to put a train through your, you know, through your backyard, and we're not looking to, you know, invade your privacy. I will tell you that, when we look at, you know, office space, it's generally a Monday through Friday operation, and it's generally a daytime operation, generally. I'm not saying exclusively, but generally. So when you look at the impact, it's not as aggressive as some other impacts that could occur. That's what Joe was speaking of, as far as us not having control on certain applications that could come if we do nothing. I don't know if that answers anything for you, but-
Well, I think the other thing in looking at that, in terms of Nelson Heights specifically, is that, again, looking at most of those, I would expect that if we were to see anything that, that obviously Nelson Heights would not be the access to those. I mean, it is a small narrow street, and I don't think we would be ever looking that that's what people would be coming in and out of. I would expect that that would be in and out of Main Street in terms of the traffic flow. I can't, you know, and again, I don't know the exact parcel layouts out there, so I don't want to, I don't want to say never, but I can't imagine that we would think that some sort of use would use Nelson Heights as an access and entrance into it that wouldn't have frontage already on Main Street, is their way of accessing the development.
I'm interested in knowing to what degree you can redraw the map, so that, to your point, you don't know what the landscape's going to be like in twenty years' time, but preserving that residential area until such time that, all right, they really do need this, or there really is a definite plan to put in a specific commercial-type property and then revisit this at that point. And rather, you know, that entire area to the north of that intersection, yes, we'll go for it, and even on the other side of Prospect Street, on this side, yep, rezone that, because clearly, right now, as it's presently used, it makes perfect sense. But I find it's a stretch to push that argument onto that clearly residential area with the thought that, well, in twenty years' time, the landscape's going to be different.
Stranger things have happened, and let's just say, twenty years from now, they may actually need to purchase your, and again, stranger things have happened, and I'm not saying that this is going to happen, however, twenty years from now, if this was changed and they were allowed to expand and put an office, let's just assume, in everyone's yard, you actually might favor, because your real estate may have a higher value, because there's now options, whereas today, there are no other options except residential. Again, a lot of this has to do with the hospital, the needs of the hospital, and we can't just do one side of the street. That's why we're looking at this seriously. Again, with that said, and again, Harry, I use twenty is. It could be fifty. I won't, listen, I won't be on this board, I can tell you that. You know, we don't know what's going to happen, but we're looking at, one thing we know is the hospital is expanding, and it's one of those desirable things in this community that we're thankful that we actually have a hospital, and look at the good things that they've done with the Dana and so on and so forth, so that's what-
Look, it's a great asset to the town of Milford, no question about it. They do a good job with the good care of their property. However, it's a twenty-four-seven operation.
The hospital itself is, yes.
Yes.
The ambulances are getting louder and louder, they're having more people come in. It's not only the town of Milford, it's all the towns.
Hence, community.
It's a community, right.
And as long as we're residential now, I feel to see why we just can't stay that way until somebody really wants to come in.
Because unfortunately, Harry, you just said it, you're really not a, with the advent of the hospital and its expansion, it has actually taken away from the feel of a neighborhood that what used to be, when we look back at what the hospital used to be-
It was a community hospital.
It was kind of a-
Campus one and campus two.
It was a small hospital. It was a small hospital that you barely knew was there. Fast forward, but then again, hey, we used to walk everywhere, too. We don't walk anywhere anymore, so I mean, a lot has changed.
But I think, I think this is an attempt to, one, control it, but to also realize that this zoning allows for residential. I mean, the only way that this is going to change is somebody decides they want to sell their property, and they can get more money for it in a, in a office-type usage than, there's no, there's no one that says that you are now in a non-conforming use. That usage that you have in this zone is going to be conforming use in the zone. It can stay residential. Depending on how much somebody wants to pay or not pay as it moves forward, is what's going to change the zoning. But that's why we try to change it to a zone that allowed for residential. We didn't change it to a, to an office use exclusively and say, hey, you're non-conforming within the zone. Anything that goes forward in the future, if there's any redevelopment, has to be that. It can be residential, because that's allowed in this zone. So it, to us, it's the, it's an attempt to be as soft on the residential and to allow that continued use for as long as people in that area want to use that, but then to allow for a change of use that we see happening anyways, in a more, in a way that we're able to control that a little bit better than if someone were to come in with a bunch of parcels that were attached to the CB zone in Os Town Meeting, to change that to CB, and then put in something that is allowed within the zone that we have nothing to say about, other than it meets our requirements. So I think that's what we were trying to get to, and I, this is the only zone that we have that allows that dual usage of residential and office. So it was, it was the one area that we felt we could, we could do it, because it's really rezoning that whole area, so we could have picked anything that we wanted to, but the one that we thought felt worked the best was the office residential, to allow for those residential uses to remain.
I agree completely, but everything above Route sixteen lines, everything, you know, everything you're saying is spot on, but I think above the sixteen makes perfect sense, preserving the neighborhood. I'm just worried that Nelson Heights is going to be destroyed.
A little nice quiet cul-de-sac is going to get destroyed.
I think that would be a long time before that, before that goes down to that area, to be honest. I mean, I think the, anybody that's going to do that, I mean, in, if there are people from Prospect Heights here, they may say exactly the same thing about yours, that, no, I don't think they should be in it. We're trying to look at everybody's, to be honest. We understand that there is some residential use there, but we're trying to, we're trying to protect that, at least especially for the owners that are here, they're there now, and that, then to allow future people to develop, but to keep you there and to let you stay in that for as long as you feel comfortable that that's where you want it to be, that that's, that would be a permitted use in there, and you could certainly sell your house again as a residential going forward. So that's what we were trying to accomplish.
Anyone else would like to speak? Do you want to have a motion?
The only, no, I mean, my only, and again, I'll let it go, but my only observation, again, and I spoke about it last time, is when referencing the OR, I certainly still would have liked to have seen it go further down to Fruit Tree. I think it's Warren across the street from that, to square it off. And again, because to the point of, you stop looking at the size of some of the available property, and you want to preserve the integrity of having both residential and office, I think you're missing the boat by not encompassing property that already exists, that is larger. But I also understand that that would require, you know, no, a change, because it's already written, and not necessarily looking to further complicate this on town meeting floor, I just want to renew that that's something that I would feel more comfortable, but I'm not going to hold it up. That's, that's all I just want to say.
Okay, thanks, Pat. So.
I move to close the public hearing. Make a favorable recommendation to the town meeting.
John moves, do we have a second on that? Move the public hearing and send a favorable recommendation to the town meeting. Second by John.
Joe.
Joe, all in favor?
And this was for both public hearings.
Close the other one.
We're going to do this one, yeah.
Which one did we just do?
We just did seven twenty. Okay. Okay, unanimous of four. Let's go to the seven fifteen meeting. Do I have a motion to close?
Do we close it, or did we just not?
No, we didn't close it.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing and send a favorable recommendation to the town meeting.
Joe, move to make a motion to close the public hearing, seconded by Joe, and send a favorable recommendation to the town meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Four in favor. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. You can, as you know, you can go to town meeting. This will be voted on at the town meeting floor.
Thank you so much for your input, I appreciate it. Mr. Weber, Mrs. Weber, thank you.
That's just my observation. If it's successful, you go back and change it in the future.
We're doing number five, Joe.
Larry, do we know, do we know numbers on town meeting floor? Have they, have they given Warren? Because we should definitely do-
You've got to do seven twenty before you do seven fifteen.
Yeah, before on town meeting floor, because-
Oh, yeah, well, I don't know, I haven't seen the draft yet.
Yeah, make sure that that happens that way.
It's getting put together as we speak, so, yeah.
All right. We have a ZBA special permit, eighty-seven South Main Street, Sal's Garage. The applicant is requesting a ZBA special permit to allow for the placement of sale of unregistered vehicles on the subject property. The existing use is a longstanding non-conforming auto repair shop in the RA residential zone. ZBA section three-one-three deals with the possible extension of non-conformities in general, while ZBA section three-ten specifically relates to unregistered vehicles. Section three-ten-two provides for ZBA special permit approval for all outdoor placement of unregistered vehicles. But the addition of used vehicle sales to the subject property constitutes the addition of a separate use that is prohibited in the RA district, and that would also require a class-two dealer's license from the board of selectmen. The auto repair business will generate the same amount of traffic whether or not the vehicle's being repaired or registered. However, to add the separate use of auto sales to a site that has long been problematic due to site upkeep and over-intensity of use is ill-advised. Therefore, Larry is recommending an unfavorable report be forwarded to the ZBA of Appeals as to the auto sales aspect of the request, and a favorable report as to the unregistered vehicles aspect of the request.
I kind of agree with that, to tell you the truth.
Well, again, you know my feelings on these class-two, on some of these lots, it's just, it's been nothing but problematic. You drive by there, and unfortunately, cars for sales are parked in the handicap, and it just becomes an issue, and one that I just, I think certainly could be overcome by just not allowing them.
And one of the more recent amendments that you'd proposed in town meeting past was to separate the registered vehicle issue from requiring the class-two license. So it is possible for auto repair garages to have unregistered vehicles within reason and not be forced to get a class-two license whether they want to sell cars or not. So there's no, there's no connection there anymore, which, which, you know, leads into this recommendation.
Yeah, and for me, I know Pat has that issue, to me, it's adding it now, effectively we'll be adding another non-conforming use. I don't, I don't think there's a reason to add another non-conforming use, I can't go along with that. But I agree, we should, they should be able to keep the business, in which case we send it favorable for the unregistered vehicles, but, because that is a way to use the place, but have another non-conforming use at the same site makes no sense to me.
None at all.
That'll make a motion to send an unfavorable to the auto sales and a favorable for unregistered vehicles to the zoning board of appeals.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by John, to send a favorable, unfavorable?
Unfavorable.
Unfavorable to the zoning board of appeals, and, did you?
On the sales.
Unfavorable for the sales.
Unfavorable on both, Joe?
No, unfavorable for unregistered vehicles.
Okay, all right. Second by John, all in favor? Ananamous of four.
Can I have your red top letter?
Yeah.
And I wrote a monocentric.
Okay.
Okay.
Number six?
Number six, ZBA variance at twelve Poplar Street, Palmer's Mercure.
The applicant requests a ZBA variance to allow for the construction of a carport at twelve Poplar Street to be point nine feet from the side property line, that's the east property line, where ten feet's required. Also, the applicant is proposing the installation-
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
It's at point nine feet. Also, the applicant is proposing the installation of a roof-mounted, small-scale solar system on the proposed carport. This in itself would require an additional side yard variance as per section three-fifteen-one-three for solar energy systems, which is a request that he apparently overlooked when he requested a variance. The side yard encroachment resulting from the proposed carport and solar system constitute a self-created hardship. Further, if the snowshed hazard described in six-eleven-fourteen letter from the applicant's own solar contractor will exist for the driveway, clearly it will exist for the adjacent residential property as well. Therefore, I recommend an unfavorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. As you look through the packet, the narrow driveway is about twelve feet wide along the east side of his house, and it goes virtually to the property line. Toward the end of the packet, there are some photos that the applicant had taken that shows his car in the driveway. There's a sample of what the carport would look like at the bottom of the one page of three photos, and then I lifted a couple from Google Earth that are appropriately labeled that show just how close the adjacent property is.
You can stop right there.
Yeah, it was just good to say.
As much as I sympathize with the gentleman and I support his- As much as I sympathize with the gentleman, and I support his efforts to...
Trying.
No, to become, you know, have a green initiative, there's no way, I just can't support the premise of allowing something that's less than a foot from your neighbors. And to Larry's point, if your roof can't support it because of the snow, you know, unfortunately, you have to be cognizant of your next-door neighbors.
You do, absolutely.
So, with that, I'm going to go with the unfavorable.
Yeah, he could, he could change the pitch.
I understand that, but I can only go by what's in front of me, so, I'm not a building inspector now.
Motion was made, unfavorable, seconded by John. All in favor?
Unfavorable.
Unfavorable, sorry. unanimous of four.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn, seconded by John. Good night, everyone.